Discussion with, on the Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Program. Doug or Bob, I don't know which of you want to go first, but you're welcome to.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm a member of the board, thank you. On your January 7th Board Agenda, you had a resolution to consider passage of basically a process that VDOT requires with, oh, I'm sorry. Document a resolution that VDOT requires on any revenue sharing or cost sharing project with them. It contained approximately seven rate projects that had been previously approved by past boards. However, for lack of understanding the details of that resolution, you all wanted to pull it for further discussion at a work session. And it was seven projects, again, previously approved by the board. I've had some dialogue since last Tuesday with a couple of you in answer some questions. The projects range from existing secondary road projects that are in the six-year plan that's been considered by previous boards. There are several projects that are within sanitary districts that will be funded through the county's rural addition program whereby the county puts up the 50% match to obtain the VDOT revenue sharing money. But the sanitary district budgets to cover half of that, or half of the county's 50% cost. So if you look at the entire 100% cost of those types of projects, VDOT funds 50%, the county 25%, and the sanitary district 25%. In the same token, on that same resolution, there was a project, Grove Farm Road, that is in a private subdivision that is not a sanitary district. That POA had agreed to put up their 25% of the funding as well. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know I have a tentative field review scheduled with a couple of board members, but be glad to answer any questions you have tonight.
Well, I asked to pull it because I was aware of the rustic road program and the rural addition as far as that. But when I looked at this and I see the dollar amount for each program, for each road, and there was no designation on here of that, like for Caulthorn Mill Road, it's a $100,000 project, but it didn't break it down as to what the county's portion of that $100,000 was. So that was one of my concerns as to why I didn't feel comfortable voting for this. And I know we had a conversation, but for those here, you might want to, you know, it's, my understanding was that's the whole cost of that?
Yes, that's right. That's the total construction, development, construction cost in the six-year plan. So the county's cost would be $50,000 of that $100,000 cost. If you just want to get on, I can get on the list if you will, or?
Yep, that's fine.
Good, just to clarify, so that's the estimate of the project?
Yes.
And if the project comes in at 80, VDOT would reimburse us $10,000 for our share of the 20 that would come in under budget.
How do we price this? How does that work? Is that out for public, like bid? And is that under the procurement act? Or how does that work?
On a six, and like I say, there's three different types of projects on here. On the Caulthorn Mill Road, for example, which is in your district, that's on the VDOT secondary six-year plan. So VDOT estimates the cost of that project. And they share those figures with the board every spring when they'll sit down with you all to revise the secondary six-year plan.
And that's project Bob, that could be built with VDOT forces?
Yes.
And their on-call paving contractor?
That's right.
Or they could use hired equipment, either one, may way.
Yeah.
So that particular road, I was reviewing the video of the meeting, the work session. VDOT's going to use their men to do that, or did that change from May?
It hasn't changed, to my knowledge, but they do have that option based on their workload. If they build it with what they consider state forces, it would be their maintenance crew or a portion thereof from their maintenance yard here on Duck Street. But when time comes to actually construct it and they're busy, their maintenance guys are busy, they may bring in one of their hired equipment contractors to do it. So until they actually start it, we may not know.
Okay.
But that's their call. The other, and let me just say, that's Caulthorn Mill Road, and this is what's confusing for the public sometimes. Caulthorn Mill Road will be built to a certain standard, which is considered rural rustic. Rural rustic doesn't mean it's a rural addition. A rural addition is a private subdivision road, whether it's in a private subdivision or a sanitary district, that's constructed to VDOT standards and then turned over to them. Rural rustic is a method or a construction standard VDOT uses to repay, rebuild and surface treat and pave their secondary rims.
And those are, just for those of you that may not know, those are VDOT roads to begin with, they're not private roads?
That's correct, that's correct.
The next couple of roads, Old Oak Lane and Young's Drive, those are two that are in Shimmel Farms sanitary district. Very, very, the first one, Old Oak Lane Phase Four is very costly project, $998,250. 50% of that would be the county's cost, but of that 50%, the sanitary district budget would bear 50% of that cost. So again, the cost sharing of it comes out to be 50% VDOT, 25% county, and 25% sanitary district. Same would apply for Young's Drive?
Question?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But when you've got that, when you've got the 50% that the county is responsible for and it's broken up 25 to our, or 50% of 50%? The sanitary district has the obligation to move mailboxes and do utilities, do any site plans that have to be done. So it's not really a true 25%, 25%. The sanitary district comes out having to pay a little bit more because they need something special done.
In some cases, that's absolutely correct. There can be certain rural addition projects that doesn't have any what VDOT considers right-of-way costs. Right-of-way costs are not eligible. So you're right, if utilities have to be relocated, mailboxes, other obstructions, additional right-of-way costs, then yes, the sanitary district would have to pay for those. So the, every project is different and unique, and it won't be, it won't turn out to be exactly 25% on every case, but that's the approximate split.
Okay. Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt your present.
No, no problem. The next project on the list is the Rockland Road Bridge over the railroad, which actually is on Urals Magisterial District Boundary, out next to Rockland Park and the Schnitt Boulevard. That amount is $710. And over the last three or four years, working with the Virginia Inland Port or Port Authority of Virginia, they had been applying for federal funding to pay for the cost of the design and construction of that entire project. That's to build a bridge over the railroad to eliminate the traffic backups that we experienced due to the train stoppages into the inland port and other industry out there. So during that same period, as inland port was trying to leverage this federal money, we, the county, were also trying to leverage some money through VDOT's smart scale process, which we'll talk about a little bit later, and revenue sharing program. The county was successful in obtaining $710,000 through VDOT's revenue sharing program. Call it seed money, if you will, but that's what we're currently using to, or VDOT's currently using to start the design and environmental clearance work on the project. Since that revenue sharing money was approved, we were successful in getting that federal build grant, which is funding the remainder of the project, which is approximately $15.5 million. So that 710 represents a financial investment for the county, but it's allowed us to jump-start the project. The bulk of the money's coming from the Federal Highway Administration through a build grant to complete the design, right-of-way acquisitions necessary in actual construction.
So of that 710, we can come up with half of that, exactly 50%, since there's not a subdivision or a sanitary district involved.
The next project on the list, Grove Farm Road, that is a relatively simple project. It's an existing private road and a private subdivision. It is surface treated, it's currently paved. It would just be a matter of a little bit of touch-up and resurfacing the road, and it would be eligible to turn over to VDOT. So that project costs is $75,000. The next couple of projects, Blue Valley Road, that's in the London Heights subdivision, the sanitary district. The estimated cost of that project is 150, of which the county, again, would be responsible for 50%, with the sanitary district paying 50% of that. And the last project on the list, Old Oak Lane Phase Five, again, very expensive project in a subdivision due to the terrain and environmental challenges. It's a $1.1 million project, again, which the county and the sanitary district would contribute 50% of that cost, that estimate. And I will say, the sanitary districts, as well as the proper government association out of Grove Farm Road, anytime they apply for rural addition, rural additions and revenue sharing funds through VDOT and the county program, the application they sign obligates them to fund their share of the project.
My understanding, I think from talking to you the other day, was that the county picks up that entire 50% and then pays VDOT, and then the sanitary district reimburses. What, I mean, I look at these and over the years, how does, how does that work with them? Do they pay a percentage monthly towards their entire debt? Or do they pay off one, their 25% on one road before going to another? How does, how does that work?
Well, that's, that's a, it's a good question, and I've got a couple of different ways to answer it or attack of a question. On projects that VDOT manages, administers, like Caulthorn Mill Road, Rockland Road, they want the money upfront. So we actually cut them a check for our 50% share of the project, okay? If there's any funding that's remaining after the project's completed, then we either get that portion back, or more often than not, with board action through a resolution, we'll transfer that balance of money to another revenue sharing project, perhaps in a secondary six-year plan. For those projects that the county administers, like the ones in the sanitary districts, Shimmel Farms, London Heights, and the Grove Farm project, the county will administer. We sign an agreement, the county signs an agreement, the board has given Doug authorization to sign these agreements. Thus, the reason to, for the board to take action to guarantee the money is going to be there. We administer the project from start to finish. We submit reimbursement requests to VDOT. We can do it as, as often as monthly to recoup the funding from VDOT, and they'll pay us 50% of what those eligible costs are. So as an example, if we've got a million-dollar project, we're administering the project, the design, we're paying the design engineers to design the project, we're paying the surveyors to stake it, we're paying our contractors to actually go out there and build it, we're paying the quarry for the stone, the asphalt plants for the asphalt, so on. We will actually bill VDOT, again, up as often as 30 days, and they will cut us, you know, a check or it's electronic funds transfer, but it comes back into the project fund. So we, the county, are fronting the money to build the entire project, but during the course of the project or at the end of the project, we are getting reimbursed for that up to 50% of eligible costs. So does that answer?
Okay. Then, so let's just take Old Oak Lane, that's $185,000. So you take care of everything to do with, from beginning to end, hiring the contractors, getting everything done, submit the bill to VDOT, they pay their portion, and then you line up a payment system with the sanitary district. Because I'm, I'm amazed that they can come up with their quarter for that road just on a check.
Coincidentally, I just had a meeting with Shimmel Farms POA this past Saturday, and I don't believe, yeah, yeah, all three of these projects are their first three priorities in their capital improvement plan. And their share of those three projects, Old Oak Four, Young's Drive, and Old Oak Five, based on these estimates, their share, and this includes some utility and right-of-way work, off the top of my head, it was about $750,000, if I'm not mistaken. Can't give the exact number, but yes, we have that funding set aside in special projects or fund balance from monies from their operation, annual operations budget and surplus funding that we've had left over at the end of the year, and other revenues that the sanitary districts receive, like through construction, new construction fees, that we set aside to cover their quarter share of the project cost. And I've got that money set aside in the fund balance to cover their, their cost. So on the resolution, when you're guaranteeing to pay for the county's 50%, the sanitary, at least for these three projects in Shimmel Farms, that money's setting in special reserves or fund balance to cover the local, the local subdivision or sanitary district's cost.
Mr. Chairman, to add a couple other examples, Lakefront Road, going to Lakefront Oil.
Yes.
We have their shares sitting aside, we've got that money upfront.
That was VDOT administered project.
That was VDOT administered project, and we're waiting to close that project out and settle up, so to speak.
Yes.
Another project, Shangwalla, we worked and we took, we went out of salt waste business, went out. They actually, small subdivision, 20 couple lots, we actually, the board ended up funding or financing that over a 20-year period. And this month is the month, every year annually, we'll take out our annual payment from their proceeds to the sanitary district. That's one of the good things about the fact that we collect money from the sanitary district, we can work out the agreement, we can take out that payment. But that's the only one that we've got right now that we are financing for them, because they were just too small. And we financed it at 3% annual interest rates, and we do get some of that returned back. But like Bob said, in the case of most of the districts, even like London Heights, you've got money sitting aside in London Heights to cover all our portion of the Blue Valley Road project. And the ones like Grove Farm, we'll have to work out the arrangements to get those funds before we start or work out the terms of the agreement at that point.
Once we know that we have a VDOT project like Grove Farm, once we know we've received VDOT approval, and it could be this coming physical year, it's a biannual application process, it could be the following year, once we know from VDOT when we'll be able to begin the project, we'll be in contact with that POA and say, look, you know, we need your, your funding or your commitment upfront in order to start moving forward.
Okay. Well, what is the process of getting a road like Grove Farm Road that's already, it's not a bad road, and I realize it's private, and it's, you know, I can see where they would want it to be a state road and not have to maintain it, and as far as snow, the way the general upkeep of it. But how does a road like that go ahead of a dirt road when revenue has to stretch?
Every few years, and I'll say approximately every five years, the county has called for applications from private subdivisions, including sanitary districts. We advertise, we put it on the website, we beat the bushes. It's typical that Mr. Stanley and I, through the course of a year, will receive a number of calls from residents that live on private, normally gravel roads, that are fed up and frustrated with the cost and the dust and the ruts and the potholes, and have that question about how they can get their road upgraded. So we'll typically keep that information, that contact information, and we'll actually reach out to them when we go through the advertising process. I put a copy in Urals package of the last advertisement we did back in 2017, and I believe also in the package is the list, previous couple rural addition lists. What we do, we'll, we'll set up 30, 60-day period to receive applications, we'll get them in, we'll evaluate them based on length, condition, number of homes served, have they been in existence for 20 years, make sure they meet VDOT criteria. We may actually have to go out and review them with VDOT. They may be too steep or too curvy, or have too many other environmental challenges. Maybe not cost-effective for the subdivision to proceed. But we'll evaluate them, we, staff will rank them, we'll normally have a work session with the board, we'll recommend our priorities to you all. You all might have different thoughts, but at the end of the day, the board will establish a priority list, and then that's what myself and staff works off of for the next few years, whether it's two years, five years, 10 years, until the list is reevaluated. And a copy of that list is in your packet, too. Unfortunately, and Mr. Stanley had attested this, we just frankly don't receive that many applications. Residents want the roads upgraded, they want them paved, but unfortunately, the cost is just too great for them to fund their 25% share. I believe also in your packet, when we went through the process in 2017, we had a couple of roads that were submitted as applications from Thunderbird Farms POA. Well, they were high on the list of priorities, if I'm not mistaken, they were in the top 10. Well, last application period, we knew we would need to start applying to VDOT for the revenue sharing funding to get it in place, and when we contacted the POA, they elected to pull both their applications. They decided not to proceed. So once you get on the list, there's no guarantee it'll move forward, the POA might have a change of heart.
So basically, it's, you know, I didn't, I, you know, never heard, you got to keep in on what's going on here to even know you can request this, because I didn't have a clue about that, that that was the way you, you know, considered that. And when I, when I look at this, part of my concern, and I had asked for a projection of where we are with, I'm looking at figuring out the budget, and that we're getting ready to win that process, and I'm given this, and I figure out the amount on here's over $3 million. And, you know, hearing the woes of some of the other agencies, I feel like we're set up, we've been set up to have a disaster trying to figure out how to fund so much and not raise taxes. So when I look at some of the things on here, you know, I mean, how much, not having an idea of where we are with our budget, I have a problem signing this and dedicating $3 million of money and not knowing how that's going to affect us down the road determining a budget and whether we need to increase taxes or not. So definitely, I would not touch that Rockland Road, because that's, that's grant money, and don't have a problem signing a resolution with that. But some of these other projects, if, if I have to look at pulling to keep from raising taxes, or everybody always says, oh, we'll have to cut school, we'll have to cut core items, I would rather cut a road project and whittle it down and use that money to keep our, to keep from raising taxes. So there's where I am, and I don't know where everybody else stands, but I just don't think, as much as I want everybody to live on good roads and safe roads, until I have an idea of where we are, where this $3,623-plus dollars is going to throw us with that, I have a hard time signing this or voting for it, but.
Is it our understanding that this money is already allocated? That's what it, or it, so?
Yes.
What I'm hearing is that the money is already set aside in previous budgets for this purpose, is that correct?
Well, for the sanitary district, it's set aside. We budget, basically, the board has budgeted $250,000 a year for revenue sharing. This will be assuming the next several years, and the Rockland Road has been paid for, that's actually we paid in current year, because that product moved forward to design. Basically, that we would continue to budget the $250 per year, and that's pretty much what we've been able to manage the projects with, and what we base our request every two years is looking at about, you know, for a two-year period, $500,000 and counting match for that duration, and we've been able to get by the last decade pretty much doing that.
And I understand that.
We tried to increase it, but we haven't, we haven't had the funds to be able to do.
Right. And, you know, and I understand that you have, you budget things out for different areas, but like I said, last year or second year, and we got down to so many people being upset about another tax raise over a six-year, and the statement was made, we have looked and we can't cut anywhere. And then there was, you know, well, we can cut school budget, we can cut social services, we can, they always hit the core items, and I don't want to have to do that. So that's what I'm looking at. Until I get an idea of these roads and some of the things maybe on our capital improvement, I feel like we need to put a whole lot until we get an idea of where we are with our budget and where we're going to go tax-wise. So I would feel comfortable signing that we're on board for whatever we need to do for Rockland Road, but until I get a good idea, I just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable moving with this entire list, because if it comes to cutting this or schools and our county employees, I'll cut a road.
Having a question about, obviously, obviously budgets and all that good stuff. If we choose not to fund this, or the way that Sheriff was talking about, if we choose not to fund it, how is that going to actively impact us? I mean, is there a time period that we, if we refuse to do it, can we go back next year because we've done this much work and pick it back up with VDOT? Or who, whoever that we have to deal with? Or is this, if we don't do it now, it's dead?
VDOT would request us to cancel the projects.
Well, I'll talk to Mr. Carter and ask that question, because I try to do my homework before I put myself out there on the ground. And I asked that question, and he said we could start over. And I asked that question, and he said we could start over with scratch. Because I didn't wanna do anything that's gonna knock us out for years and years to come. And, you know, I wanted to know, because I didn't wanna screw this up with the Rockland Road by holding it off. And he, he said he wasn't even sure when the deadline was for it. But he said, yeah, we could pick right up next year and just move on forward.
Is that true? Or I'm not sure exactly what that means.
If he said, if we could pick back up next year and move on forward, he may have been suggesting that we submit another application, which again, next year is the application period for revenue sharing projects. And then again, we would have to compete with all the other statewide needs.
So then we go back into a three-year, five-year cycle again?
Very possible, yes.
Well, I, I may be misunderstood, so definitely, we need to, to get with him. The next morning that he comes in and he can say it, you know, to readdress it to everyone, but like I said, I know it's, it's a vote of the majority of the board, but I just, that's just the way I feel on it.
All I can say, again, we'll just have to give a clarification on what Mr. Carter meant by it. But I can say that about two years ago, we had a project that had been funded through revenue sharing in a private subdivision. And at the last minute, the POA didn't wanna move forward with it. So they asked, VDOT asked us to, to cancel. The money had already been approved and allocated, but they asked us to officially cancel it.
Yeah. And this is worst-case scenario. We, we may, once we, that things look better than they did last year. I don't know. I just need to, everybody to understand that if, if it comes down to what it came down to last year, roads are lower on mine, priority less than cutting core services, the safety and welfare of the people in the county.
So my, my question would be to Mr. Carter. What happens if we choose not to fund it? And he needs to put that in writing course so we can actually see it, feel it, touch it. And we'd like to have, if at all possible, would love to have that before next Tuesday. I don't know if he can get it that fast, but a commitment, a commitment or a statement from him that we can rely on would be sufficient to maybe help us help make, to make the decision. I don't wanna just give it up. I just want to feel comfortable about making the right decision for our county.
I should, and, and I will also find out exactly when they would need this resolution so that we can determine, you know, if we've got some time for you all to work through the budget process to see what you're facing with. They didn't give me a deadline.
Mr. Carter, you okay there?
I have just one little technical question, if you will. Is there a minimum standard for the, the steepness of a road that VDOT would not take? I know there's a steep road down in Shenandoah Farms. And I was wondering if the loop would be able to be made because of the steepness of the road in the future when it continued on with the improvements?
What loop are you speaking of? We have a couple dozen out there, Mr. Carter.
I was wondering, what's the highest one, almost the highest one up on top?
Oh, High Top, that, that, that actual, the existing roadway itself is too steep. And VDOT's maximum grade is sixteen percent.
There is a, there is a.
Yes, yes. So if, if High Top would ever be considered, we'd have to do a tremendous amount of filling in that hollow to raise the roadway grade up. Be a very costly project to address that grade issue.
That answers the question. That is the technical question. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions out in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Dee Schools. I live at four sixty-seven Freeze Road, London, at Boffa Hata. Righteous colors, I wanna thank you for finally questioning some of this. Not everybody in Shenandoah Farms is a member of our association. We're done differently. You have to join. You're not just a member due to buying a house. We have a property owners association board. That last time I checked, the membership was at thirty-one members. That's thirty-one people. We have over sixty miles of road. Last count, I believe, was around two thousand lots. The association does not represent all of us. There's been questions for years about the road revenue sharing and whether or not this money could be used elsewhere. Old Oak is a very expensive project. The meeting that our property owners association had this past Saturday has, they have voted to decide to bring to you to raise our sanitary district taxes to help fund further road revenue sharing programs. Our current unimproved lot fee is two hundred and sixty-five dollars. They wanna raise that forty-five to meet up with the improved lots, which are three hundred and five. Then they want to raise everybody an additional forty. So our unimproved lots will be raised, if you guys approve this, eighty-five dollars. Our improved lots will be forty dollars raised. We haven't seen increases like this since I've lived here in fifteen years. It was explained to us, it's because we don't have the money to continue to do road revenue sharing programs. So we want to thank you and all of you for really looking into this. Because it seems that we are promising things that we can't afford to pay for. Couple of these projects were put in in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. I asked if we'd saved anything towards them, and my answer was a no. So thank you for looking into this, whatever you decide. I appreciate you taking the time and energy to look into it.
Now, quite a question, and maybe Laura, you can help with this. If, if we approved it and you, we got the money to do it, it would basically take us three years?
Three years out.
Yeah, three years out before we ever had the revenue sharing dollars to do the thing. Uh, Gloria, could you come up? Yeah, so just so we can hear.
Yeah, come on. So, the sanitary district fee has
It's a tax.
Tax has not been increased this amount. It's true. Okay, but the amount that has been increased is not able to keep up with future planned projects nor the amount of inflation costs and materials and so on. So it was presented, we had a meeting for the public, for everybody in the farms to come out and let us know what they want to, or their thoughts on increasing the sanitary district taxes on this. It was voted on to increase this in order to keep up with inflation costs, material costs, how much it's gonna, how much we're gonna need to fund these roads three years into the future, at the rate of collections now and the money won't be there. But at the rate that we sat down, we figured out, we did the math, we, and we took in every perspective of what would be needed and carefully looked at those numbers. Then we presented the amount of money. And it was suggested, actually, by some community members that have unimproved lots to go ahead and bring that to be the same. So this was brought on to us by the community, this suggestion. And the board agreed that, yes, this would be a good suggestion to bring all the lots, unimproved and improved lots, the same across the board. So now they will all be three hundred and five annually. And then the four, the forty dollars actually would go across the board annually to be able to fund these roads. So we could read out twenty-five percent in agreement with the applications so that we wouldn't be turned down by VDOT in the future for these roads.
And that's three years into the future, is that?
In the future, yes.
Okay.
In, in the past ten years, we've done five miles of road, our community sixty miles. And this was not an advertised meeting.
It was.
If you go to the right place to look for it.
Now, we go, we have a huge community sign that everybody will see.
Over a half hour away from my house.
Yeah, we have a website. And we can all
Anyway, that's a whole other subject.
Thank you.
Well, that was gonna be a question of mine. I know I have sitting a lot at Lakefront Royal, that's in my district. Had no idea what the sanitary district was, but I've learned a lot. And I understand that you have meetings, and it's, it's a choice whether you come or whether you don't. But when you have things like this, it seems like there has to be, at least in my mind, it seems like there has to be a way of either sending out a letter or something in the tax bills, making them aware so that they can have more input if, instead of like a billboard type thing. I don't know if that's possible, I don't know. But if everybody's getting some kind of bill, then I think that probably, to make sure you're covering all your people, because I've been hearing there's like three thousand homes down there. To think that there's thirty-one people on.
I think the biggest disconnect is the fact that not everybody is a member of the association. And a lot of people don't even know that there's an association. We don't get newsletters like we used to get four a year. We don't get those anymore. Although, I understand that we pay them to put those out. I think the biggest disconnect is the lack of communication between sanitary district tax-paying residents and members of property owners of Shenandoah Farms. Shenandoah Farms also spans into Clark County. Clark County gets to use all of our community building, our rivers, you know, the river lots, the lake lots, all of that. But they do not pay a sanitary district tax. So ours keeps going up and up and up and up. And they don't pay into it, even though they still use our entire community, just as we do. So it's, it's a very unique and different community. And I think a, a lack of communication has been our biggest issue.
You're not really addressing that. That's, it's not all factual, especially with the Clark County. But to avoid getting into this big issue of other things, county properties, to, to, to point with the roads, which is your concern.
Right, that's not concerned.
So all the other noise to your, to your point, with the roads and the communication which you brought up. We have a website. It is advertised in our newsletter annually. And we do have the website available for information. To go to our website, we keep asking, go to our website. In addition to that, the office, we have a voicemail that gets checked frequently for any questions or concerns. The website is updated regularly, and I'm on that website daily. And the news we get. So sometimes the information that we have to get out there is time-sensitive. It's not something that we can project and say, okay, a year from now, in the annual newsletter, we're going to increase sanitary district taxes. So when we do our budget, we realize, okay, this is indeed, we're gonna have to increase some things. And how do we solve this? How do we make this work for everybody in the community because they want the roads done? So we have a card set on the sign. In addition to that, we put it in the website. And on the sign, it says, please visit our website. So, I mean, other than making a phone call and spending thousands of dollars, and, you know, we don't have any extra money. We budget our money so tight. And any extra money goes into a special fund, which is kept within the county. So all this extra money that we can pass, we contribute, in addition to any money from the sanitary district, it goes into the roads. So it has to be.
I can see you got, it's, I've driven down there. It's, 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 as you say, it's an interesting dynamics there with the community and beautiful community, by the way.
It's a lot.
But, you know, my, my concern is if, you know, and if somebody can, I'm a visual learner, so if I can get a spreadsheet of what, you know, what they spent, what they owe, as far as, since the county seems to be footing the bill and they're reimbursing, if I can see those numbers, that will help me a lot.
Well, we do have the budget here. That is, is clearly outlining all the numbers out there. And in addition to that, the answers to the Clark County portion of this is also there. That's to Clark.
That would be part of the budget presentation for us, correct?
If you would like a budget, a budget presentation, I would rather be able to ask Cheryl and I'll work with you on that. How would you like that, Sarah? Would you like her to come to the board supervisors meeting? Or how would you like to each of you to offer a couple of thoughts?
I would say that, you know, typically, we've got thirteen sanitary districts. Typically, each of the thirteen doesn't come to a separate presentation. Typically, this year, while they're different, there'll be two or three that have an proposed increase. You may want, and we can provide them a time for those that have an increase, maybe to come in and talk to them.
I was gonna say, I see, I said in last year, I remembered there were seven that did present.
And the overall? I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
No, that's all right.
But with this much of an increase, it, it would, well justify it so that the people know what the increase is for and why you're trying to do it. And lay it out so we can actually see it.
We had that on the Saturday, this past Saturday. We had Bob come in and give a formal presentation on this. So it was very clear on what was going on, what was needed, and how we were gonna approach it.
Now, the, I, I was there on Saturday, and if I remember correctly, the only thing that I saw was roads. There's, there's more to the sanitary district and, and the homeowners association in the roads, so.
Okay, so, so that I have a clear understanding of what your expectation would be for us to come in and present the whole budget and where all the money goes within our budget and what we receive, what we contribute for the sanitary district fee and taxes, and then what we receive back for all that money's going. Is that what you're asking?
More or less. I don't think that we need to see the line item by line, and the line item, but if we have, if we have to question it, we'd at least like to have someone there that knows what the answer is.
And that might be good for your community as well, to pay here. And to answer your question, where your money, where your money's going.
Actually, I've been through both sides of the budget, the county side. And because the sanitary district tax gets collected by the county, we give so much to the association for them to manage certain things. Hiring a party planner, paying for the heating on the building, on our community building. You know, there's, I, I understand the budget. My, my big thing was to thank you for taking time to review the money and to make, like, you know, educated decisions. And not just, okay, here's another road project, stamp it. Because later, as we're seeing, these projects are getting more and more costly. We might have one point two million dollars, but there's at least two million dollars worth of projects on that list. My big thing is just thank you for looking into where not just my sanitary district money's going, but where the county's choosing to put its money. I, I didn't, no big discussion on Shenandoah, then we could talk forever on that. But thank you for, for, for taking the time and really looking into that.
And I, I appreciate what you're saying, because I think, you know, so I appreciate what you're saying. Looking into the fine detail, making sure that there's a check and mailings.
There's been a whole lot of this.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, I understand.
And not look at seeing where money could be spent.
I agree that you should also do a check and mailings. I truly
Very, very certainly.
I truly believe that. But on the community side of this, at the office, our budget is right there at the front door. And we hold the general membership meeting once a month. So if there's a genuine concern about any of these, any of those questions can be answered at any one of those meetings I'm in.
That's good to know.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have everything open book. We get all of it, it's just, it's all there, we have, you know, we have check and mailings going without a doubt.
We do appreciate your time for coming in.
So did you want an explanation? Do you want me to have, you know, our chairman come in and explain to you any more information? Do you want me to have, you know, Chairman come in and explain to you any more information about the budget? Because you had mentioned you might want to do something like that.
My main thing at this point is figuring out what our debt service is and that kind of thing when we're dealing with these roads. So, you know, that's where I'm in. Without knowing that, it's hard to make a decision.
Yeah, yes, I don't disagree. Did you want me to have at the Max Board Supervisor Meeting, have someone come in and explain anything on our budget or anything like that?
Mr. Chairman, one of the things we're in the process of doing is collecting all the budgets. We'll sort it up altogether and get your budget book. Perhaps later we can schedule, maybe one of these work sessions, an opportunity for them to come in. And the other districts that may have an increase, we can present to you if that works.
That works for me.
That'll be fun as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the audience or from the board? And who have no more questions? The next discussion is on the Virginia Tech Department of Transportation, the twenty twenty smart scale program. That's Doug and Bob, who wants to take that first.
I'll start, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Project Application Process, their round four begins this coming spring. The projects that VDOT will be considering this round will include improvements to the interstate, primary and major projects on the secondary road system that will not, not include revenue sharing that we just talked about or other special funding programs. At this early stage in the process, it's our understanding, based on our current population estimates, that we'll be able to submit up to four final applications for potential funding. Furthermore, the Regional Commission will be able to submit applications on our behalf and we'll have dialogue with them about that. As in the past, we understand VDOT will continue to use factors such as land use, economic development, environmental accessibility, congestion mitigation, safety as some of the primary scoring factors to determine whether or not a project is eligible and ultimately approved for funding for it. And as in years past, we also anticipate that smaller, more cost effective projects will tend to score better when we're compared to other hundreds and thousands of projects on a district and statewide basis. I had put together a list for you all and it's included in your packet. It's a comprehensive list of very small or larger projects throughout the county and based on historical issues and known improvement or safety needs. I've categorized it by magisterial district and recommended some prioritization within each district. And had intended, we had intended to take two projects from each district to discuss with you for possible priorities to submit to VDOT. But with that said, I had intended to go over the list with you this evening and we can continue and I can continue to do that. However, Mr. Stanley and myself and other staff members met with VDOT today for about three hours this afternoon and reviewed the list. And sad to say, but approximately fifty percent or half of the twenty-two projects that we have on the list won't meet minimum qualification criteria to even be evaluated and considered. And of the remaining fifty percent, very few of those would likely score very high in the qualification process. So based on VDOT's input and their limited funding that's available, the majority of the project locations won't qualify or even score well. So we'll need to take a step back, reevaluate our list of potential project applications. And at the end of the day, really, the reason for rural communities like ourselves with relatively low traffic volumes and numbers of accidents on our primary interstate system just don't compete well with larger jurisdictions with more traffic counts. That's the nature of the beast, so to speak. We're competing not only with the other eleven counties and urban jurisdictions within the Stan construction district for some of this money, but also on a statewide basis. So you can't compare a project we may have that's critically important for us to one that might be in the middle of Fairfax County that, you know, carries fifty, seventy-five, a hundred thousand vehicles a day. It's just very, very hard to compete with projects like that. So I foresee us, based on the conversation with VDOT today, whittling our list down to, as heartening as it is, to maybe one or two applications with a monetary cap of maybe two to three million dollars for us to have any hope of success to gaining any funding through this next round of smart scale applications. As we move forward over the next few weeks, I hope to get the actual timeline from VDOT on the pre-applications and the ultimate applications will need to be submitted. We'll continue to work with them to evaluate these projects and any others you all might want to suggest that aren't on this list. Be glad to. And as I or we, myself and staff, continue to work with VDOT, we can certainly keep you all posted on what we're thinking about that may actually score and compete well through the application process. This board doesn't need to take any kind of immediate action on a list of priorities. Our intent tonight was just to bring you all up to speed in the preliminary steps that we normally take with them on an annual basis, whether it's for the major construction projects this year or the revenue sharing projects that will go through the same process next year. So with that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions or talk about any of the projects on the list or any other potential locations you all want to suggest.
Questions or anybody on the board? Questions out in the audience?
I was gonna say, my other questions are which ones are questionable that they may make it out of all that?
Well, I would say this, that the higher volume primary road being three forty-five twenty-two north of town probably has as many of the qualifying factors of any route in the county that you'll be looking at. There's economic development out there, there's high traffic volumes, there's safety issues and hazards, high accidents compared to other locations. And in addition, maybe out in the Linden area. But other than that, there's not a whole lot in the county to choose from that would be highly competitive with other projects.
So we can anticipate if you're coming back to us in a couple of weeks or a few weeks.
I think that's fair.
And say something.
Yes, sir, I think that's fair.
Is there any possibility of extending the turn lane on the sixty-six from where it gets backed up all the way?
Southbound on the sixty-six east? Yes, we had a discussion about that and VDOT's gonna take a look at some, initially take a look at some signal timings. And we talked also about some big picture, very costly projects to address down the road that won't be in this list, I'm sure. But we had about ten or fifteen minutes of dialogue about that very issue, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the sharp traffic has created grooves in the road and there's...
Yes. Right. And as I told on my history with VDOT over the county, I believe we've extended that turn lane twice in my career. So it can't be extended any further north. Traffic's already backing up and stacking through that crossover from westbound off-ramp. So they are aware of it.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you very much. Next discussion is the Board of Supervisors on the Meeting Policies and Procedures in Public Care and Godbumps. That's Doug Stanley and Mr. Ham. This one is a lot for us. You're welcome to stay, but this one is gonna be drawn out just a little bit, I think. Because we've gotta go through twelve or fifteen pages of information and maybe line item changes. But you're welcome to stay. I just want to let you know that it might be a little bit long and a little bit tedious for some of you. I'm sorry?
Thank you.
The only thing I would...
Yes, sir.
If we could maintain pretty much the public input?
Sir, that's the intent. We're gonna have at least one meeting a month where it's gonna be just like this.
This is very...
And one of the, one of the things that we're gonna be talking about is the presentation period at each one of the meetings that we have where we do some voting to give people some additional input either before or after or whatever. But to make it better for the community to understand what we're trying to do. We don't want to push anything through. We want to be as, I hate the word transparent, but we want to be as clear as we can when we make a decision. So thank you for coming and you're welcome to stay. And if you want to, you're welcome, but otherwise, thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Here's a question.
Yes, sir.
What we go to the budget, could we get enough money to get rid of these paper signs on the wall? Like for the dent room out here and for the one over here that says...
I'm Mr. Stanley. And thank you for fixing the PA system, whoever picked that because that, thank you, man. Because that, that flooding was driving us crazy. Again, thanks for coming.
Appreciate it, thank you, guys.
Do we need to take a five minute or...
I say, let's push through it.
Okay, I'm ready to push through it.
Let's go, it's on third, yeah, let's move.
Doug, do you want to start or do you want to...
First, and I'll let Jason talk, he's prepared a lot of the proposed changes. Emily has eloquently put together four options for you in the front. The first one basically is the current order of the agenda with twenty minute public presentation time up front and then a general public presentation time of sixty minutes back. Option two would simply have one sixty minute period at the rear of the meeting. I think that's what Jason drafted at one point. Option three would have a longer up front of forty-five and then fifteen minutes at the back end. So forty-five provided one agenda, fifteen to the general. And then option four would just simply have a thirty minute topic period up front for either topic, either one agenda or off.
So and I think we can make this a little quicker. There was actually an option five, my original suggestion, and actually not in any of these. Actually, I just figured that out. And perhaps there's a reason for that, perhaps Doug got more remember feedback that they didn't like that situation. I feel like the most efficient way by far would be to go through this through the actual policies themselves, which are in your agenda package, the ones that I had provided to you.
Are we talking about the last ones or the third?
We're talking about the last ones, the ones with the track changes, protocol changes.
So can I actually answer Mr. Ham's question more quick? So I didn't include yours, I'm sorry. Because the structure that you proposed in the meeting policy procedures, it was after new business, it was before new business, but after the consent agenda? So technically on each agenda, the consent agenda is considered new business? So I wanted to pop it before the consent agenda, just for clarification purposes?
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, I think that's quite nice. So, but again, I feel like, Mr. Chairman, this is up to you. But the most efficient way would be to just plow through this from page one. Okay, so on page one in section one dash one, I've gotten rid of EST because it's obviously, that's where we live. Section one dash four, there's no reason to use Latin words in procedures that are confusing. And then there's just kind of a few words that don't mean anything in section one four. Please stop me and I'll slow down when we get to things that I think have substance. But if somebody who has questions as I go along, please interrupt. That's it.
I'm ready to do that.
Go for it.
You've got the day's list that you haven't added this day. This, this meeting, the second Tuesday in the month. I think it needs to be added to it.
I'll get that, I'll get that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is a work session, not a regular meeting.
Understood.
Certainly, we can...
Well, if we put together a new one that basically puts everything the way that you've done this, when we vote on it, we can actually vote that in, correct?
Sure, you can have work sessions in here. The state code provides that you've got to decide at your organizational meeting when your regular meetings are. And your regular meetings are the meetings that you have the legal power to do anything. A work session is different from that. So if I were you, I would not commit yourself to the work sessions for the complete year at this time because you don't need to. You can have flexibility with respect to those. But if you don't want to do that, if you want to put it in there, that way for some reason you met.
So I believe what Mr. Ham is saying is prudent. I think that we should just do the voting meetings and the work sessions. Because we may have to add a work session or delete it.
You're gonna have a lot of work sessions.
Right, based on budgeting. And so if you start adding and deleting, then you're gonna get really confusing. So I think that what you're saying is prudent and I would go with this suggestion.
Well, I understand it better now than I did a minute ago.
Yeah.
Sure. And I understand, you know, where you want to give the public transparency that, you know, you just told everybody that at least once a month, we're gonna have a meeting like this. Well, that's fine. It's not necessarily gonna be the second Tuesday every month. And maybe it will be.
I like consistency, so.
Sure, yeah. And you can be as consistent as you want, but that's the reason why it's just the regular meetings are in there.
Thank you.
Sure. And again, please interrupt us as we go forward. Section one dash five, there was a reference to a recording secretary and that position doesn't exist. Doug Stanley's the clerk and Emily is the deputy clerk, so I clarified that. Section one dash six is grammatical. One dash nine, and this is where we get to substance, there's an or here. You have to decide whether or not you want to allow remote participation at meetings or not. If you, it's fine either way. I haven't seen it done much, but you're certainly welcome to do it. And if you want to do it, then you need to accept the changes that I put in here because they are simply to comply with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, which says that if all of the members aren't gonna be here, if you are going to allow remote participation, there's certain procedures that have to be followed to protect the public, to enable them to hear and to know everything that's happening. So it'd probably be nice to get a straw poll as to who wants remote participation versus who doesn't.
So is there technology available to us for remote participation so that the person out there can hear, so that the community can hear them?
Yeah, so Mr. Coats, Dr. Coats, the gentleman who records all of our meetings, he was able to set up a phone system where it could also be plugged into the speakers. And so the individual on the other line would hear us and we in the audience could hear them.
Okay.
Now, Ken, is it also strong enough to where those people that are out in the audience can actually hear the people that are talking back and forth?
Yes, it would be projected over the speaker system, just like the magic phones are.
And that's a FOIA requirement, the person has to be able to be heard in the audience, and by you.
I was just curious as to whether the technology existed now or we would have to purchase it.
No, that's a very, very, very...
Yeah, okay. Then I am in support of that. I think that under emergency circumstances, I mean, we're living in a very virtual world. So we have to accommodate. So I'm in support of that unless someone else has a...
I'm supporting as well.
Okay.
I support it to the point of if, I would prefer to have a quorum of people before we use the technology. If three people are gonna be out, we shouldn't be doing it at all.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you, that's a FOIA requirement, Doug, the word actually says that in the rules, but you must have that for FOIA purposes anyway. So three of you must be here physically before the meeting fails for lack of a quorum, even if there are two available. even if there are two available electronically.
Then I'm fine.
So I'll get rid of that "or" for the next one that you see. So, then we get to section three, which is conduct of business.
I would support that for emergencies, for emergency purposes, I mean.
Right.
Well, that, okay, so let's talk about that. The way it is currently written, for emergency purposes, you can do it as many times as you want to, just for your own personal purposes, you can do it up to two times per year, and that's the maximum allowed by FOIA. And, you know, that, that's, the FOIA Council and the General Assembly decided that's kind of a fair way, and just because someone's in Florida all the time, you don't want them to miss every meeting, but they could miss two. So that's the way it's currently written. We can make it so that you can only do it if you're sick, for example. I mean, the FOIA language is temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition. So we can limit it to that and get rid of the optional situation if someone's on vacation, or we can leave it at it as is, which allows you to have the optional situation twice per year for, for a choice, so, but that's for emergency medical.
I mean, Tony, Mr. Carter is a good example of that tonight. He's not feeling well. That doesn't mean he couldn't listen and participate. He just didn't want to infect the whole world by coming in. So, I think emergency situations would work well. I mean, if they just can't make it and they're sick are a, a real reason for them not being here, I'm all for that.
And, and we can make it that way. I hope, you know, we talked about Mr. Carter, you know, he had a death in his immediate family recently, and I spoke to him today, so you get into an issue of, are you sick enough to, to be able to use it versus giving people free passes, but, two free passes per year, but that's up to you guys, however you want to do it.
I hate to say this, but we're all adults. I know, I know when I'm not, when I am sick enough not to come in. I want to be smart enough to do that, and if, if it becomes an abuse thing, the market's going to, I mean, the board is going to know that.
All right, so I will revise this to reflect the fact that it's not to be used just for personal situations. It's, it's only to be used in the event of temporary or permanent disability or, or a medical condition that prevents the supervisor's physical attendance.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is, is, you're going to have to, to work on this for a while, is the conduct of business. And this is absolutely your decision as to how to deal with it. My thought was that we would have public, I actually liked the idea that Emily presented having the public comments even earlier in the meeting. Right now, we have a, my, my two cents with respect to the agenda order, and this is again entirely up to you. One is that if you have an agenda public comments period and a general public comments period, you have a situation where the chairman has to interrupt people when they get it wrong, and you also have to make a judgment call as to whether or not you're talking about the agendas bill or if you're talking about something else. And, you know, I think it's nice, though, just to let people say whatever they want to say. And with respect to the consolidation, people might be annoyed about taking two comment periods and putting it into one. You could fix that by providing more time, like, for example, the 60-minute timer that I put in here. I mean, that could easily be 180 minutes or 120 minutes, or whatever you wanted to do, and that could deal with the, the two versus one situation. But again, you can do it any way you want to, but I think you've already experienced where a nice person is talking and you have to interrupt them and say, hey, Emily, we have to talk about this now. The second thought is that we have a unanimous requirement for agenda, for amending the agenda, and fairly regularly, we have situations where you're not going to want to take action until you've had a closed meeting to talk about the cost, or how much we're going to spend on, on property, or do we really want to enter this contract, or what are we going to do, you know, you want to talk to me about something. And so I thought it was a good idea to have an additional new business section if needed, and that was described to you in the letter that I had sent to you. And that way, it's on the agenda, so instead of having a closed meeting to discuss, you know, the, the purchase of X property, or the closed, closed meeting to discuss the possible purchase of a property, you could then put in, in there as well, so the public all, all knows that you might actually buy the property that night, or you might actually take some action with respect to FOIA. So that, those are my two cents with respect to the agenda, but again, this is very much up to you guys as to however you want to order your business.
Opinion? Archie, do you have an opinion? Mrs. Collins?
So the public hearings cannot take place prior to 7:30, but they don't have to?
No.
They can take place anytime. I mean, that's just the time in there. You can reset that time if you like. It'd be a time after.
After 7:30, but it is an impact. So if we made it longer, this, I'm trying to see how much longer beginning that it could run before public hearings? Because Tony did make a good point that, you know, you have engineers and attorneys and a lot of folks that are being paid to accompany, you know, our customers, if you will. So if they, you know, if they're being paid, then exaggerating the time that they're going to have to wait is not in their best interest, but, you know...
And that's, and that's exactly true. I mean, from the other perspective, I've sat here and watched many angry people talk about, why do I have to wait till the end of the meeting to talk, and y'all have done everything, and now I get to talk?
Right. Yeah, we have, it's, it's definitely on, it's pros and cons.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley, do you have any info on that? You've been listening to 20 years of this.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I think all those points are valid. I do think, you know, and we have had nights where we've had 50 people here for three or four public hearings, and certainly, if they have to wait an hour after, say, it's 8:30 or, you know, whatever time we end up with, it is frustrating for those folks. So I don't know, I think certainly whether it's 30 minutes or 45, I think having a shorter period up front makes it easier. I was saying, yeah, I, I just, there's got to be a striking balance between the two, delaying folks in the public hearing too long.
When, when you have the shorter discussion up front and then talking about everything?
No, just the agenda.
Or just the agenda?
Depends on which option. Option four, I think, is anything, and it just, there's upfront, there's only upfront. One of the earlier ones has that, you know, currently it's 20 minute and then 60 minute at the back end, so I think it's your feeling. I think a lot of folks, that limits people, though, if they want to talk about stuff that's not on the agenda, they have to wait for the entire meeting to get it over with. Historically, we had, you had the comment period up front, and folks could make their comments about anything that was on their mind and leave the meeting, go on, get home in a reasonable hour.
So I, so I believe that since we've now included this meeting, we're giving people an opportunity to comment that they didn't have originally, and so I think keeping it shorter at the beginning and on agenda items is, I, I just think it's an efficient use of time. I wouldn't, if you start adding, you've got folks that are going to come in here and complain about their sewer systems or their roads or, you know, and then you're, then you're consuming all of the time that we have, when they could actually use this forum to do that. So I, I would keep it, I, that's my opinion. I would keep it focused, because I think we tend to get off track anyway.
Like what I would prefer is have 45 minutes up front to speak, address any comments on, address any part of the, and say anything they want to say, and then 15 minutes at the, at the end of the meeting. And typically, what we've seen is that if you keep the first part of the meeting a time limit too small, they won't wait till the end of the meeting to speak again. But if you're down another 45 minutes, which is typically, has been proven to be adequate for most cases, and then if there is someone that wants to speak really bad, and they were set in wait for that, for that second time to speak, and I think that, for me, I think that would work rather well.
My, my question on that would be if we made it 45 minutes, so we're adjusting the time that we, we start the actual meeting, and then we have people speak for 15, what are we going to do for the other third, because...
We don't have to use it.
Yeah, we just go right into the...
Well, I understand that, but for the people that didn't want to talk and think that, like it is now at 7:30, so they aim to be here at 7:30, and things have already started, they're going to, you know, is that going to be an issue?
We could deal with that on a case-by-case basis. I mean, if that, if that happens, then frankly, if it happened with respect to a zoning matter, whatever, and then advertised at 7:30, you, you would have to, you'd be forced legally to take a recess until 7:30.
Right, that's, that's mine, we got there, that.
We got that, okay.
You know, it's possible that that could happen.
And it did happen a couple of meetings ago, and we had to take a recess for 15 minutes until 7:30 to start, yeah, to start the, the public hearing, so, yeah.
So if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, the 45 minutes up front and 15 minutes at the end is adequate for everybody. We can adjust it as we need to, if we have to, but...
And that's with the understanding, if we need more time at the end, law and agreement?
Well, you know me, I'll talk to anybody.
Well, and that adjusts me too, so, but I, I just don't want to do anything that the public's going to see as we're, we're trying to limit the time again.
I'm, I'm hoping that the public will never see that.
I, I think we're in, in the right direction for that, that certainly.
Okay.
Yep.
So 45 minutes up front?
So option three.
It's option three. 45 minutes up front, 15 minutes at the end.
So, this option three does not include the additional new business item after a closed meeting if needed. What's the pleasure of the board on that? And again, the, the reason for that is in case there's something you want to talk about in closed session before you take action on it, and you want to do it that night without...
So we can add, we can add it anytime, or it's, it's just always going to be there whether we use it or not?
Yes, and, you know, you can always amend the agenda, but it's unanimous, so you can imagine a sit, well, there's two, two issues with amending the agenda. First of all, the public isn't provided the notice that they normally get, and number two, it has to be unanimous. So if it's a situation where there's four of them, board members that absolutely want to do something, one of them doesn't, well, that one person has a de facto veto, which I don't think is really what you, what you want.
Sure. Opinion?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I like this, that we're giving them the opportunity to speak before we go to a closed meeting, because that's, that's always been a, a place that people get upset about, too. You sit out here for an hour, you come out, and, so I like that.
So I, I will go with option three, adding additional new business after the closed meeting in both the morning and the evening?
Before the adjournment, yes.
Yes, before the adjournment, okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's...
And Jason and I have talked, traditionally, like, if we had appointment of plan commissioner or thing of a BZA member on for close, interpretation is, it's on the agenda, and we're just taking action, coming out. I think this just clarifies that there may be some official action outside of closed session.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, it's always clunky, you know, amending the agenda, you have to do two things instead of one, and it's late the day when things like that happens, easy for mistakes to be made, too, so... Okay, so that is section three, and then we get to 3-2. I moved around some of this language, because there was some language talking about how the agenda is to be adopted that was mixed in with the actual order of business section in section three above, so I, I basically just moved that. So that's section 3-2. Bear with me one second as I find the next substantial item. Robert's Rules of Order. Now, I had a question from two of you about being nervous about taking this out. Robert's Rules of Order is not always consistent with state law. For example, Robert's Rules of Order doesn't require a second, and there are different holdover rules for, for a chairman than there are in Robert's Rules of Order. It's also a clunky, hard-to-read book. In my 23 years, I haven't used it. Doug, however, has used it once, and I, it's, it's not that important to me either way. I mean, some of these other things I really think you should have changed, but if you want to keep section 3-15 in there, that's fine by me.
I personally don't like it. That's me, and I'm willing to go with what the board says, but I, I guess I'm used to running a meeting sort of the way that I do, and I may make mistakes at it. I'm going to get better at it, but I want to be able to maintain the order in the room, and if Robert's Rules of Order would do that, that would be great, but I don't think that it will, because we don't have 100 people on our board. We've got five people, and I think that we can control it ourselves.
Hey, I would just say don't strike, strike, strike out just the way you, it's being presented. I would, I would do away with the Robert Rules of Order also for, for our meetings.
So we got y'all.
I know, you're the one.
Well, because there are certain provisions in Robert's Rules that allow you to use things in a tactical way, that I think sometimes apply in meetings where you might be in a minority, but you might be able to use Robert's Rules in a tactical way to, to maneuver. Do you understand what, I mean, it, it is...
The answer to that question is no.
It's useful. It is useful. I have seen it used in a tactic, tactical, in a tactical, well, I can't even say the word now, but I'm tired, and in a way that I think sometimes is beneficial, particularly if you are, if you understand it and understand how to use it. I think a lot of people don't understand Robert's Rules, and I think that's one of the reasons why people don't want to use it, because it is cumbersome, but it's been in effect for hundreds of years, or so, 100 years or so. So I hesitate to dismiss it until there's a really good reason to do that.
So, what's your pleasure, Mr. Coats?
Yep, I'm going to bow to her expertise, because she has it all over me on that one.
So I'm going to put it, I'm going to call Tony, see what he wants to do.
All right.
And, and whatever he decides is whatever the board...
Because it's two in two, so...
And that's, that's fine with me. I mean, I'll go with whatever the board says, but I just don't think that it's necessary at our level.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I agree with you, but I don't think it's that important, and, you know, and everybody's made some good points here, so I'll, I'll talk to Tony and tell him he's the deciding vote, and he needs to be here next time, so...
Not allowed yet, so...
Exactly. Section 4-1, there are some things that I would call loopholes in section four of, of the public hearings that I've tried to close, and, and none of these are, you know, one of the founding fathers were drafting the Constitution. Everyone knew that George Washington was going to be president. They all respected and loved him, but they were writing about limiting the powers of the president anyway, because of course, what, what happens. So, in section two, basically, the time allotted for the presentation shall be determined by the chairman. And I, I do not insinuate Mr. May would ever do this, but Mr. May didn't like whatever was going on that night. Here, you, you get eight seconds, and so I've added a provision where if that were ever to happen for some reason, that you can appeal to the board, the decision with respect to time.
Is, is there a general time limit, or is it, I know you, I think the, the rules say if you've got an hour time limit and there's 10 people talking, everybody gets six minutes?
I, I think we've got a five-minute time, time limit per speaker, and, you know, the Gettysburg Address was three minutes, and nobody up here talked more than, in my judgment, three minutes at any one time, so five minutes is deliberately very generous.
I agree.
And then that goes over to page 10. Again, just the same issue, chairman establishing a time limit, and if, if the board, a majority of board members thought that there should be a different time limit, that could be something that could be decided by the whole board, not just the chairman unilaterally. Section 10, I struck the language, or such time limit is made to be set in advance of a hearing by the board. I was trying to think procedurally how that would happen, and you can always amend your rules and set different time limits for things anyway, so I just got rid of that. And then the rest was just some, I would call typos. Over to section 5-1, again, I don't think there's anything substantive in there. 5-5, request to appear before the board. I, I wanted to clarify that if you want to be on the agenda, you've got to do it within the time limit specified in section 5-1, and... the time limit specified in section 5-1, and.
That brings up a point for me. We've got some things that are coming up that will have to be presented to the board. I need to, I would like to know what, how you really do it, how you really get something to be presented to the board, because the militia thing is coming, and we can get somebody that wants to talk about it every time we have a meeting. Is there a way that we can stop that through our policies?
Well, there's, yes, but you won't like the answer. There's nothing in the Virginia Code that makes you have a public comment period. It is not required by state law. Now, you know, the public would scream and throw things if you tried that, but you do not have to, you know, we are a representative democracy, but the public spoke when they voted you into office, and they have access to you otherwise. So that's the way to do that. Once you have created the public forum allowing people to speak, they get to talk about whatever they want to talk about, within the limits of slander or causing fistfights. So, you know, for example, in Chendron County, there's a guy that comes up every single meeting and talks about Cuba for about, for his whole three minutes. And I, and he's never learned anything new about Cuba, but he talks about Cuba every time for three minutes, and you can't stop it. So if you, you know, this is freedom of speech.
Okay. I'll let him talk.
And that's the best answer, by the way, by far, you know, is to let people talk and to never eject them from a meeting unless the most extreme crazy situation, which I've actually not seen even here at some of its worth.
I've seen crazy here.
I've seen crazy here, too. I haven't seen crazy enough crazy to justify having a sheriff's deputy escort someone out, so.
Well, I can agree.
Causes more trouble than it's worth. So section 5-6 and 5-7 are basically designed to deal with the fact that we now have these two named public comment periods, and they set forth the maximum five minutes for any one particular speaker now, and there's, that's what I was trying to achieve there. And that's it.
I missed, I missed one thing, and every one of us sitting up here at some point in time during our tenure will, has the possibility of submitting or requesting an oath, and we're allowed to do that as the chairman. How is an oath done? And is there a way, is there a format that we use in case we ever need it?
It's Code, Gen. 49-1, it says what an oath is supposed to be, and that's not something that's going to be in your procedural rules, but I can find that on my phone anytime you need.
49.
Print a copy and have it available to you. Yeah, that's something that Doug can print and provide to you anytime you want to provide it.
I mean, every one of us are going to have to at least know this stuff.
You get a copy of that from me. Sure.
Absolutely.
Questions?
Under what circumstances would one of us be referring to Minister?
So it's in there. You could, for a public hearing, in my 25-plus years of account, it's never been done since I.
I don't think I've ever seen it.
I was in Huraco years ago when I was in grad school, and I saw it done in a meeting, and they were, you know, I think it was a border zoning appeals meeting, and they were, they swore people in to take an oath to testify before BZA, something like that, but.
We would know in advance, right?
I would think so. Yes, yeah. And if we didn't, you know, and Doug was here or I was here, Doug will always be here, I'm not necessarily always here, and he can, he knows that process.
But if somebody, if somebody came up at our podium and wanted to talk, and would the chairman have the ability to make them accountable, like swear, you know?
No.
Why not?
Again, you know, they, once you open it up for a public forum, they can say whatever they want, and you can't make someone.
Doesn't have to be true.
Yeah. Well, they can get the lawsuit, but it doesn't, it's, we're not, we're not a court.
But sometimes you just, we got to get to the truth, and the only way they're going to get to the truth part is through people, and if we have to ask somebody to tell the truth, I want some teeth in.
Yeah, I don't think you have to require, the power to require oaths. I will tell you from, from, you know, my other job is, as a trial lawyer, plenty of people lie under oath every day.
Okay.
I would leave. It's not okay, but it's the way it is. But, you know, you have to determine the truth through other ways.
Right. Verify, but, trust, but verify?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Meeting is adjourned.